And I'm the Chairperson of the Petroleum Pipelines Subcommittee. I will be chairing this public hearing and I would like to introduce the other members of the panel. To start off with, Madam Nfundo Maseti, who's a full-time regulatory member, as well as the PPS member. Over to you, Madam Maseti.
Good morning, Chairperson, and good morning to the people that have joined this public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I also have got Mr. Nkantla Kumete, who's a full-time regulatory member, as well as the PPS member.
Thank you, Chairperson. I will share my video later. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I also have got Madam Tembega Semane, who's a part-time regulator member, as well as a PPS member.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Chair and colleagues, and to the members of the public. Sincerely apologize that I can't show all my video. I'm already on holiday and I didn't take anything for my thanks.
Thank you. Last but not least, I've got Mr. Fungaisbanda, who's a part-time regulator member, as well as a PPS member.
Good morning, Chair. Morning, Kwan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spanda and all of you members. I'd just like to also apologize for Madam Advocate Nomalanga Stolle, who's a Chief Executive Officer and a member of the PPS, not a part of this hearing today. This hearing was advertised in the following newspapers in the print media. The May Journal of the 21st of November 2023, Cape Times of the 21st of November 2023, as well as the Star Newspaper of the 21st of November 2023. It was also posted on our website and it is held in accordance with the Energy Regulator Act, in which affected parties are given an opportunity to submit their views and present relevant facts and evidence to the energy regulator. This hearing is governed by the NERSA Rules on Public Hearings, which can be summarized as follows. One, all parties will be required to make their presentations under oath. Presenters have been allocated thirty minutes each. There's a second one. Thirdly, only members of the panel may ask questions to the presenters. However, members of the public may forward their questions to patients.masongani@nersa.org.za. And it's going to be flighted on the meeting chat, that email address. So it members of the that have joined may ask some questions and channel them through that email. And the panel will then decide on how to deal with those questions. Fourthly, and lastly, should presenters wish to present information they consider confidential, the panel will make a ruling on whether to close the meeting or to have the information submitted in writing. The recording of this hearing will be done through our recording system and will also be a live. There's also a live audio streaming on NERSA's Twitter page, which is at nersa Za. This will be the official record of this meeting. The house rules for this meeting are, please switch off your cellphones or switch them to silent mode. Please ensure that your mic and video are switched off at all times unless you are making a presentation. Please use the chat responsibly to contribute to a meaningful discussions through the public hearing session. Please, if we may, also ensure that there is a respect. We treat others the same way that we love to be treated in making those comments. However, only two presenters for today's public hearing and each will be given thirty minutes to present. I have Madam Tanuja Naidu, the CFO from Transnet Estate Own Company Limited. And I've got Mr. Rudy Histerman, who's the Head of Regulation Markets from Sosolside. I note that there could be other presenters beside themselves that would be assisting with making presentations and will have then to duly saw them in, saw them in to ensure that we then proceed with our public hearing. I would like then to call upon those that represent Transnet Sock Limited to come forth so that we can be able to saw them in and get them to present. Good morning, Madam Naidu. Are you the only presenter from, are you the only presenter from Transnet?
Yes, Chair, I am presenting from Transnet. I'm joined today by our Acting CEO, Mr. Sebongi Senikati, and the Head of Business Development, Mr. Chris Anika. Should the need arise, Chair, and if you allow, if there's any questions that I may not be able to answer, but I could direct it to them, would they be sworn in at that time, Chair?
Okay. So do you have any reservations, objections to taking an oath?
No, Chair.
Okay. Please raise your hand and affirm the following. Do you solemnly declare that the evidence you are going to give this panel is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes, Chair.
For the record, please state your name, company, and your designation during.
My name is Tanuja Naidu. I'm the Chief Financial Officer at Transnet Pipelines, a division of Transnet S O C Limited.
Thank you very much, then, Madam Naidu. You do have the maximum of thirty minutes to present and then we'll ask you questions coming from the panel. You just have to have your pen and paper ready to jot down those questions and then respond there too. And at the end, we'll give you another five to ten minutes or so for you to then respond to whatever has transpired during the the public hearing. Over to you then, Chair. Thank you.
No, Chair, thank you. I will share my presentation, Chair, but I know we have submitted it, so. I'm trusting we all have view of it. So once again, good morning, Chair, and good morning to the all regulatory members. Just to introduce myself again, I'm Tanuja Naidu. I'm the Chief Financial Officer at Transnet Pipelines. This morning, I just have a short presentation because our tariff application on the petroleum pipeline system has gone through an extensive public process already. And so I'm not going to, Chair, use up the thirty minutes, hopefully. So I'm just going to briefly touch on the executive summary and some allowable revenue components and an area on the slide on the volumes and tariffs. So we did file our tariff application on the first of August of this year, meeting the regulatory requirement. We, in terms of the application, we met the requirements of version seven of the tariff methodology and all the associated literature that goes along with it. We believe as Transnet, we've applied it to the fullest. In applying the tariff methodology for the twenty-four, twenty-five financial year, which will commence on the first of April 2024, and using the tariff methodology, we've arrived at an allowable revenue increase of approximately twenty, twenty-one percent. As can be seen from the presentation before you. Included in this allowable revenue increase, Chair, we've included the deferral of the revenue of previous years. And we've also included, Chair, the deferral of the revenue clawback associated with the Black Swan event in the 2021 decision. So if you look at essentially, Chair, what comes through on the allowable revenue line year on year, you will see it's actually a fourteen percent, a fourteen and a half percent decrease. However, based on the deferral of the revenue in the previous tariff decision, which we have not included any deferral, Chair, we've allowed that, allowed the regulator to make decisions associated with deferrals. You would see then that brings us to a twenty point eight-seven percent increase, approximately twenty-one percent. The volumes associated with this tariff application, Chair, is sixteen point. I've actually got a detailed slide, Chair. I just see there's a mistake on the first slide. It's actually not sixteen point six. I apologize for that. I will refer you to the correct value on slide five of the presentation. It's actually sixteen point three billion liters. Just some, very quickly, some components and how they're impacted the allowable revenue. You will know, Chair, as I've already discussed, the two point eight billion deferral has been included and the Black Swan event deferral in terms of the clawback. As per the twenty-three, twenty-four tariff decision, Chair, which we have agreed with, we have included it as part of the regulatory asset base and deferred it over the remaining useful life of the assets as agreed or as decided upon in the twenty-three, twenty-four decision. I think the other important things to just bring to the members' attention is that we have also included the SAPR tanks with an expected operationalization date of thirty-first August. However, Chair, we have since communicated to you in the questions that you've asked that this, these, these tanks were actually operationalized around May this year. There was some uncertainty on the actual operationalization date of the type of filing the application. There was still a number of matters that had to be dealt with regarding certain equipment on the separate partner side, like some gauges. But I think importantly for us, we needed to wrap up and the last invoice, you know, was still outstanding. A few of the invoices was still outstanding. In fact, the last invoice only came through in this month of December. But we've now established with certainty that the operationalization date was around May this year. In terms of the weighted average cost of capital, the rate we've used is eight point four eight percent. And I think what's important there, Chair, is to actually indicate to the committee that we've used all the variables as given to us by the regulator. And this is the outcome. It is significantly lower. Well, it is lower than the previous work rate and that comes across nicely in the lower work. And that comes across as a result of the lower beta that has come through from the cost of equity calculation, as well as the higher inflation rate, because we do use real variables. And we'll notice that that has come through as well in the cost of debt calculation. Expenses, approximately six and a half percent increase. We've answered all questions relating to the expenses, Chair. And as per the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four decision, we have included the refractionated plant back into the petroleum pipeline system prospectively, Chair. Depreciation has been calculated per the methodology. We do not qualify for an effect to, Chair, in terms of the regulatory literature that supports the effect to calculation. We've got a negative clawback of approximately nine point five million and tax has been calculated in terms of the methodology. The volumes, Chair, as you can see, again, I must apologize for the error on the first slide. We're forecasting sixteen point three billion for the twenty-four, twenty-five financial year, Chair. And then the volumes that you see from the twenty-six year onwards are forecast. And right now, Chair, they're just based on a GDP minus one kind of projection, Chair. You know, with the absence of more certain information and taking, we've still got to take into account various initiatives that our business development team is actually working with. And we're still waiting for various outcomes in that regard to give us more certainty on the future, yes, Chair. So currently, we've maintained it at a GDP minus one growth rate, projected growth rate for the twenty-six financial years onwards. Then for illustrative purposes, Chair, as we've always indicated to you in the tariff application, we've more or less calculated the tariffs. However, Chair, you would know, subsequent to the tariff application, we've also filed with you a revision of the distances in terms of the routes due to the decommissioning of various sections on the DJP that is taking place as the regulators away. So we've also brought that to the regulators' attention and therefore these illustrative or indicative tariffs that you would see today would be revised when you do your calculation, Chair, as the authority sits with you to set tariffs. As I said, we've just indicated for illustrative purposes, Chair. So Chair, that brings me to the end of my presentation. As I indicated, it was going to be short and I'm happy to take questions now.
Thank you very much, Madam Naidu. We'll just get your pen and paper ready to take questions from the panel. Panel members, by show of hands, please indicate if you want to pose any questions to Madam Naidu. I note Mr. Kumete, then Mr. Spanda, in that order. Over to Mr. Kumete, sir.
Thank you, Chairperson. Just three questions from me. Good morning, good morning, Madam Naidu. Just three questions from me. The first one, is it possible for us to, I don't know if you have the statistics, if you could show the trends between the volumes that go into the petrol and pipelines versus the the volumes in country? That is, I just want to see whether, if we see a growth or a decline in the pipeline volumes, is that a loss to Transnet pipelines or is it because there is volume decline? So that's the first one. I'm not sure if you'd have that statistics for, if you could share that, if you do, please. Or just an indication, maybe you might have an analysis. The second one is that, you know, again, I'm just basing my question on an assumption that there is, there is volume loss to Transnet. I just want to understand, is the volume, if that assumption is correct, are Transnet volume losses due to losses of, losses of volume to other modes of transport? Or perhaps to maybe fuel coming via different ports rather than coming through Durban? I'm not sure if my question is clear, so, but I'm hoping it is clear. And, but thirdly, are the volume losses, perhaps, if there are volume losses, I guess I'm simply saying that the assumption here is that there are volume losses. Is that if there are volume losses, is that any, are those buses, any of them due to the decommissioning of the DJP perhaps? Are they volumes that perhaps were generally going to pipeline destinations that are no longer connected to the NMPP? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kumete. Over to Mr. Spanda.
Oh, Chairperson, sorry. Can I just ask this overarching question? I thought I was going to ask it, but I wasn't sure how to ask it before I actually see the volumes. Is that for me, for me, I think, Chair, the question that I wanted to ask, a classic, a overall question, that if indeed there are volume losses and if indeed those volumes are being lost to roads or to any other mode of transport, increasing tariffs, does that not lead to a classic utility death spiral?
Thank you. Is that all from your side, Mr. Kumete?
Yes, Chairperson. Thank you and apologies.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Spanda, sir?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Ms. Naidu, for that presentation. Just a couple of questions from my side. So regarding volumes, you've projected a decline. But now, if you look at what's happening in the short to medium term with respect to macroeconomic performance, especially the GDP rate, it's expected to, there's expected to be an uptick in twenty-four, twenty-five financial years. Now, I'm not so sure as to why, from your side, that has not been factored in. You still see yourselves not recovering to previous, was it last year's volumes that were higher, but you sort of like projecting decline. So I'm not too sure why, why, why that is the, why that is the case. Maybe you can talk to that. And then there is a lot of money that has been spent on security due to pipeline theft and vandalism, all of that. And now you are proposing that amount to be recovered from consumers? Now, there is obviously a moral hazard issue here that if consumers are to pick that, what is it then that incentivizes Transnet to make sure that you intensify your security measures? Because whether you do it or you don't, consumers are still gonna pay. So I just wanted to test this with you that, because, I mean, as a business, you are also supposed to bear some level of risk. You're in business because you've taken some risks. So why is it not that when it comes to this particular issue, you are not in a position to do that? You've done it with volumes, for instance, the Black Swan issue. There's a risk sharing here, I mean, there. So why not with respect to this particular matter, why can't there be a risk sharing instead of consumers bearing the full brand of the pipeline theft and tapping? So I wanted to just test that with you to say, is it fair for consumers to bear the full brand of the security measures that Transnet is employing? And then there is also a concern that as a regulated entity, you don't face the same kind of risk that a, an entity that operates in a competitive environment faces, for instance. I've referred to the volume issue, I've referred to the security issue and all of that. Now, the concern is why then should you deserve a beta that's at the level of entities that are in a competitive environment? Again, because, I mean, you've got, in a way, you are secured. So your risk is a bit lower in that respect. So why do you deserve a beta that is higher? I wanted to just check with you those first three issues. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spanda. Over to you, Madam Maseti.
Thank you, Chairperson. Chairperson, I'm covered by the questions asked by my colleagues. But I would like to find out from Transnet about the completion of the NMP project completely, if it can be, if it's possible to be completed. Because we have had a number of these clawbacks and these clawbacks are largely driven by the revenue shortfall. And also, we get dates and extensions regarding the completion of the part of the projects, but they never get finished. So there will be a time when we have to make sure that we look carefully into the prudency test as well as efficiency test. Now, I would like to understand when Transnet anticipated to finalize this, the NMP. The second thing is that I would like to ask Transnet to provide the energy regulator with the volume growth profile. And that volume growth profile must be supported by the market analysis showing the demand growth if they also want to, the energy regulator to look into the revenue and make sure that the regulated entity takes measures to make sure that it boosts sales and all that. And what I would also want to understand is whether Transnet has taken measures to obtain the sort of the demand projections from its large customers that are utilizing the pipeline, whether the customers are aware of the increase and also the customers have indicated their demand for the coming period. I think that for us becomes very important so that we can understand, you know, the demand dynamics of the market, but also just to understand the views of its main customers that are utilizing this pipeline. When Transnet is proposing the increase, how the customers reacted to the increase that is being proposed by Transnet and understanding the sales coming from the big customers. I just want to find out those, Chairperson, and to emphasize the issue of the volume growth profile that is supported by economic and market analysis and to justify the volumes going forward so that we can be in a position to predict how the capacity that is created is going to be utilized, but also just to see whether there will be relief in terms of the tariff level that the customers are paying. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Maseti. I'm going back to you, Mr. Spanda. Over to you, sir.
Yes, Chair, thank you very much. Just one last issue that I forgot to ask. Now, you'll note that previously we've sort of leaned certain Transnet costs to CPI. Now, I just want to check whether, do you think that there is another index perhaps or other indices that could better reflect the cost drivers for Transnet? Because if you look at the basket of goods that form the CPI, I'm not so sure as to whether that reflects accurately the cost pressures or the cost drivers that face Transnet. So if you could maybe just assist there, whether there is any other index or other indices that could better reflect the Transnet's cost drivers. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spanda. Now, seeing any other hand, you may respond, Madam Naidu. But I think of essence also in terms of the information to submit to the regulator, of importance would be to look at the risk sharing. Because if we do empathize with you when it comes to the theft, you know, theft and vandalism of infrastructure in the countries just become a headache. And whilst that understanding, I think it's important to know that it's not always the case that there will be a hundred percent recovery of that cost by way of claiming it through a tariff. You need to be able to consider means to see what is fair and just in such a recovery. to see what is fair and just in, in, in such a recovery. And then the other issue is the change in the pipeline route. If you can just talk to the two from, from my side and it's impact on this tariff. That should be already and you may then respond. And, and at this juncture, may I also, my, my request, Sashol to please email us the submit, the, the presentation from their side. It makes it easier to ask questions when you've got the presentation instead of requesting you to page through this, the, the presentation as it is being flighted. Please, if you can assist and from your side, Transnet, if you can, if you may, please just favor us with that presentation. It makes the job much easier than requesting you to, to revisit it. Over to you Madam Naidu.
Thank you Chair. Chair, we have submitted the presentation through. I think it was also attached to the meeting invite. So I'm not sure if that's what you're looking for Chair, the actual electronic presentation. And then Chair, before I start answering the questions, I just wanted to indicate question six that came from Mr. Sbanda. A question about why do we deserve? That, that, that was about as much I could, that I could catch off that question Chair. Deserve, I couldn't actually complete Mr. Sbanda's train of thoughts. Deserve, you know, can we just, Mr. Sbanda, please just complete that thought for me? Over that question.
Yeah, sure. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Yeah, so, yeah. So what I was saying is, given the fact that you operate in a, in a regulated environment, the, the, the concern is why do you deserve a beta that is comparable to entities that are in a competitive market and therefore the implication of that is that you, you, you don't deserve a work that is comparable to companies that are in a competitive environment.
Okay. Thank you Chair. Thank you, Mr. Sbanda. So Chair, I'm gonna go through the questions. And if I don't answer them completely or the members wish to seek clarification, please do. And so the first question was around the trends between volumes and petroleum pipelines versus what is happening in the country. So Chair, I don't have the information on hand, but that is certainly something we can do and provide. But Chair, I think as the petroleum pipeline regulator, you would also have a full appreciation that generally the country information is only available about a year in a year. And real-time information about what is happening in the country is generally very difficult to, to actually obtain. But through you Chair and maybe through your assistance and we'll certainly endeavor from our side to, to, to contact the Departments of Minerals and Energy and and actually try and source the, the country information. But all in all, you know, if we just have to see what is happening on our side, we find that there are times when we are, you know, we are not pumping optimally because tanks are full and we've been told that, you know, there's actually no demand in the inland market, but we have to back that up, I fully understand, by data and if the Chair and the regulatory members would give us the opportunity, we will source that information and provide that to Nasa in writing. And that along with Ms Masetti's request for the volume growth profile and market analysis. If that is in order Chair, that was question eight. With regard to the volume loss question, I'm going to just speak to two and three together Chair. Because I think there was a question around the DJP and, you know, could, we have lost certain volumes because of the decommissioning of the certain sections, particularly the certain sections of the DJP. So Chair, you will be aware that some of the sections that we have closed down is, for example, are Bethlehem and Lady Smith. And that was done some time back. So certainly those markets are no longer being supported by pipelines, petroleum pipelines. So clearly those have been, those markets have now been taken over by broad or, you know, other rail if it's going there. But you, I think you would understand the challenges on the rail side as well currently Chair. So those are certainly volumes that have been lost from the pipeline to other modes. But with regard, with regard to other entries, ports of entry into the country and stuff like that Chair, we would have to, we would have to come back to you on that, on that issue. For us, you know, we know Chair, whatever has to go into the pipeline goes into the pipeline. As I've just indicated that data around volumes or is very, very scarce Chair. And, you know, we do meet regularly with our customers. We have our Business Development Department headed by Mr. Creson Michael who's also on board today. And we meet regularly with our customers to always understand, you know, the challenges on their side and, and certainly what's going on. And one of the things you would be aware of Chair is the, is the current challenges we have at the storage facility up at Talton. And the associated, well, that's basically the symptomatic of the issue around with SARS and everything that's impacting that. And we know that the volumes that go into Talton comes through via the pipeline. So there's, there's many factors. So, you know, those are some of the factors that are currently affecting, you know, the, the pipeline volumes. But as the regulatory member asked about, how does our volumes compare to demand in the country at the moment? That in itself, you know, will actually reflect much of why volumes are what it is Chair. But in also saying that, I, I, if I, I could be wrong Chair, but I did hear that we've had a volume decline. I, I need to say Chair, yes, compared to pro, pre-COVID volumes Chair, yes, there has been a decline. But I must indicate Chair that since the first COVID year, what was that, the 2021 year I think Chair, when, when things really hit bad and we, we, we pushed through just approximately thirteen billion liters. Since then, we have actually, as Transnet Pipelines shown, a, a, it, I wouldn't say a significant, but, but, but increases, marginal increases year on year. So from last year, for example, we did about fifteen point five billion. We finished off the twenty-three financial year. I can provide the actual numbers Chair, I'm just speaking of, you know, of recollection right now and it could be a, a few million liters off either way. But around fifteen and a half billion and this year we're actually projecting fifteen point eight billion. And we're trusting to get that into two, sixteen point three as you would see in the presentation that I just, just made to the members for the twenty-four, twenty-five financial year. So we are pushing in that regard Chair and we've, you know, from an initiative's perspective as Transnet Pipelines, we're, you know, in, in those engagements with customers, you will see one, I'm not sure how much information you, you're getting through the customers Chair, but one of the initiatives is actually to, to enter into bilateral agreements with, with the customers to actually get, you know, one, what one of the regulatory members are looking for. I think it was Mrs, Mrs Masetti around the volume commitments from customers, what are they saying? So the bilateral agreements that we are trying to put in place is, is actually trying to achieve is exactly that Chair. And we're still in, in progress with that, with our customers Chair. We're also making concerted effort to get a new entrance. So to date Chair, we've onboarded two new entrants and ten new entrants Chair on the eleventh as well. There's others in, in the pipeline in various stages of the onboarding process. And three of them have actually put in volumes with the one in particular that's doing volumes consistently year-to-date at the end of November, sitting at approximately a hundred and sixteen million liters. So we're, so that is one of our initiatives Chair. We're also have indicated to you previously that one of the other things we're looking at is a Transnet fuel import terminal. We know the issues around alleged storage issues and the back of port challenges. And this is one of Transnet's initiatives to, to bring in a, a new entrance and to facilitate greater volumes via the trunk line Chair. So I may have covered quite a few of the, of the volumes question in, in that answer Chair. But I'm just going to quickly walk my way down. Yes, quite correctly, a regulatory member made the comment that increasing tariffs, lower volumes, consistently lowering of volumes results in the increasing of tariffs. And yes indeed, that would be a death spiral. I mean, that is just how the tariff methodology works and, and clearly between Transnet and, and the regulator, you know, we, we've been looking at ways and, 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 and the public, all those that have vested interests, we've been looking at ways to how to manage this. I know that Chair, that you have undertaken to actually review the methodology and look at, and I'm not sure how far the petroleum team is with that. But I guess all of these things are, are, have been facilitated or by the fact that we understand what is happening in the, in the environment Chair. But certainly from a petroleum pipelines perspective, we have, it may not be significant Chair, but we have been showing a consistent increase since the, you know, a slight recovery Chair, I should say, after that, that twenty-twenty-one financial year. I've spoken to the customers. The customers' reaction to the increase Chair. And I say this with a smile Chair, you probably know a lot more about that than we do because you would have gotten the responses to the discussion document or, or to the confidential version of the tariff application that you published out in the market Chair. So, you know, so from our side, on the petroleum pipelines, transport tariffs, you know, we haven't heard anything in particular relating to this application Chair. But as I said, I'm sure that you have received what the customers' views are. With regard to the completion of the NMPP project Chair, in terms of phase one of the project Chair, you will remember phase one was actually divided into one A and one B. The completion of the separate tanks Chair now marks the completion of one A. One A is the, the, that section of the project Chair which you have done in prudency reviewing. But obviously outside of the separate tanks which have just been completed now. And then the second part of phase one is the TM1 tanks, the coastal tanks Chair. And we're currently looking, you know, to have that completed somewhere around twenty-twenty-seven Chair, the latter part of twenty-twenty-seven, that's current estimates Chair. Forecast, forecast date of completion. And that will mark, the completion of the TM1 tanks will mark the completion of the phase one of the project Chair. And then with regard to phase two, phase three and phase four, phase three and phase four Chair, phases three and four, we have discontinued Chair, we have approval to no longer pursue phases three and four and that has been approved by, by the Transnet Board. So we will no longer pursue phases three and four. Phase two Chair is something that we are, we are still holding on to because we just need to understand, you know, with the shutting down of the engine refinery and we know that the separate refinery, we still waiting to hear the, the future on that. And, you know, also not having a full view of what's gonna happen with the inland refineries as well Chair. So we have not, we have, we are still holding on to phase two and that will be informed, whether we proceed with phase two Chair, which you will remember includes putting up pump stations and further pumps in existing pump stations. That will be informed by what is going to happen in the future with regard to volumes as well as with the, with regard to the inland refineries Chair. Going on to the security issues Chair. So, I mean, you, we have, you, Nasa does sit in our product theft task committee. So you would be fully on board with the challenges we have experienced since twenty-twenty Chair. If I can remember, it's been some time now with product theft syndicated crime Chair. And you would also be aware that the incidents based on the efforts that we have put in has been brought down significantly Chair, significantly. So if I had to just give you certain stats there that I do have available and if I could just project Chair so that the committee members could just have a view of these stats. I'm hoping that, I'll just put it in slide mode so that it can be a little bit more clear. So Chair, you will notice that if, these are year-to-date numbers based on the, on the, on November year-to-date. If you look at the years nineteen twenty to twenty-three, twenty-four, you will see a significant improvement at, on the, on year-to-date up until the end of November incidents that have taken, you know, have actually taken place. And that is because Chair of the efforts that have been put in with regard to bringing down or addressing this crime Chair that's currently taking place. And at a point in time, Transnet Pipelines was averaging around twelve incidents a month, you know. And currently, you know, the team has done exceedingly well to bring this down to approximately five incidents a month and, and certain times, certain months much lower than that Chair. And you would, you know, you would see that there was a slight pickup or spike in this previous year. And Chair, we can, we can explain that as we've already explained it to the regulator. We had a change in service providers around, around June and July. I think it was around that time of the twenty-two, twenty-three financial year and we were hit quite.
I think it's the phases as you have provided, we, we proceed and move to us concluding your responses, please.
Thank you Chair. So that takes care of the stats Chair. And then with regard to, I think there was one more question Chair on the, why should we pass on this cost? So Chair, at the end of the day, the measures that we have put in place has actually resulted in a significant decline in costs for Transnet pipelines. And you will ask me how and Chair, you will know that at a point in time, these, these, these theft incidents sometimes result in huge environmental contamination. Waterways, the land, et cetera, et cetera Chair. Animal life and you know our pipeline runs through farms. So, you know, all, all sorts of areas, waterways. And the amount of money at a point in time that we've had to provide for. And the amount of money at a point in time that we've had to provide for to rehabilitate and clean up this land. As part of our legislative responsibility in terms of the National Environmental Management Act. Was sitting at close to two billion. And today, Chair, because of the efforts that we have put in around. Security and other aspects to protect the pipeline, Chair. We've actually, on a, you know, on a net basis, been able to actually release. And not incur costs of approximately one point three billion rands of that. So the efforts have actually resulted in a reduction in the overall cost that we could have seen, Chair. Had we not put these these measures in place. And the pipeline is supporting the inland market, it is supporting the country, Chair. The hub of South Africa's economy. And what we're experiencing is symptomatic of the consequences of the criminal element. In the environment of South Africa. It is not as a result of things that Transnet is not. Taking responsibility for or or Transnet is not maintaining their pipelines or anything of that sort, Chair. It's not as, the root cause is not because of Transnet not doing. It's the root cause is the criminal element, Chair, I just wanted to indicate that. Sorry for taking so long in my explanations, Chair, I apologize.
Thank you. I think due to the timeframe that we're facing. Would normally say providing outstanding information. Within seven days from the date of the public hearing, but noting the season that we are in. I would say that it would appreciate if that information can be provided by the fifth of Jan twenty twenty four. It will then assist us, as you know, that we are working against the clock to ensure that we've got the tariff approved in time. To incorporate a host of other changes that should come in into the prices of fuel. If that is acceptable from your side, we just appreciate that. By the fifth, you provide all the outstanding information. It doesn't also stop you from augmenting some of the. Responses that you provided already during the public hearing. Thank you very much. This then concludes your presentation, Ma'am, and your responses to questions posed by the panel. You will have to hold on until we are done with the the presentation from SASSL and then you then. Have to make a response. I would like to take this opportunity then to invite SASSL presenters to come forth.
And I will introduce, I've got with me, I've got Advocate Duncan Turner, who will do a legal submission. And we have Mr. Robert Lipschitz from Genesis Analytics, who will give an expert economic analysis. For the purposes of this discussion, Chair, we are not going to focus or deal with the actual tariff application. We've done so in writing and we'll stand by that. What we are going to do is we will. We will deal with the structuring of tariffs and the consequences of tariff structuring. With particularly the reference of its effect on Natref. We think it's a very important. Part of what we need to, what we need to, you know, bring across to the regulator to. To get to a place where we can ensure that Natref has a better future and. With that, Chair, if you want me to, I suppose I need to be sworn in, but I'll be very short. And then I'll hand over to Advocate Turner and after him, Mr. Lipschitz will then continue.
Okay, I would just like us then to proceed on that basis. Do you have any objections in taking an oath?
I do not.
All right, please raise your hand and affirm the following. Do you solemnly declare that the evidence you are going to give to this panel is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
For the record, please state your name, company and designation therein.
My name is Rudy Histerman. I am the head of regulation for markets. In the SASSL energy arena.
Thank you very much, Mr. Histerman. May you just proceed then to other presenters?
Yeah, I'll hand over to Advocate Turner now.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. Chair, I'm sure you're aware that as council making legal submissions, it's not normal or appropriate for me to. Take an oath because I'm not giving evidence. I'm just making legal submissions. Mr. Lipschitz will be giving expert evidence and so. I think it would be different for him, but I trust that that's in order.
Thank you, but for the record, may you please just state your name, your company and your designation therein?
Thank you. Chair, I am Duncan Turner. I am an advocate at the Johannesburg Bar. And I am briefed by Mchunu attorneys to appear and make submissions on SASSL's behalf.
Thank you very much. May we then proceed?
Thank you, Chair. Chair SASSL has made a.
I just like, I just like to first of all get all of you sunning and then you can then go ahead.
Okay, we'll ask Mr. Lipschitz then to come on to be sworn in.
Lipschitz, please. Do you have any objection taking an oath?
I don't know, that's fine.
Thank you. Please raise your hand and affirm the following. Do you solemnly declare that the evidence you are going to give to this panel is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
For the record, please state your name, company and designation therein.
My name is Robert Lipschitz and I'm working with Genesis Analytics. What was the last point?
Your designation therein?
I didn't quite catch that.
I've requested your name, company and your designation therein, your title.
Oh, my designation. I'm a consultant that works, I'm an economist and I work, yeah, I work in association with Genesis Analytics as an economist.
Thank you very much. Over to you, Mr. Histerman and your team. You then just get the presentation done and just flow. You've got the maximum period of, I mean, time of thirty minutes after we should pose questions.
Thank you, Chair. The plan is that I will make a short presentation and then Mr. Lipschitz will make the presentation. And then we trust it's in order that the questions can follow.
Thank you, proceed.
Chair, SASSL made written submissions on the first of December twenty twenty three. And attached to those submissions, the submissions that were made at the beginning of twenty twenty three. We are not going to repeat those, but we will supplement them and highlight certain things in the time that is available. As Mr. Histerman pointed out, Transnet's interested in the overall revenue and Ms. Naido has now made the presentation on. On Transnet's behalf. To meet its cost, it needs to attract its revenue. SASSL does not challenge the overall revenue requirements that Transnet is seeking and. It has made comments on certain of the requests from from NERSA. But what SASSL wishes to focus on is the is the way in which the tariffs are structured. And particularly how the tariff for the crude oil pipeline is set and how it is set relative to the. Tariffs being charged on the white fuels pipelines. Chair, the NERSA panel will know that this has been an issue for a number of years. It was first, it first became a significant issue in the twenty eleven, twenty twelve year. And it has surfaced in various forms and in different ways. The panel will also be aware that there's been ongoing litigation between SASSL, Total and Transnet. In relation to the variation agreement and subsequently due to the manner in which Transnet. Set its tariff after twenty twenty when the variation agreement came to an end. There, the point we wish to make is that it's in everybody's interest to make the disputes go away. And one of the critical ways in which NERSA needs to contribute in that process. Is to recognize the need for a lower tariff to be charged on the C O P. And it's a fundamental point that the C O P needs to attract a lower tariff than the. Tariff being charged on the, particularly the M P P, but the white products pipelines. Mr. Lipschitz is going to focus on the key differences that justify that and I'm going to. To just supplement that with the legal submissions. Now. If I go to NERSA's twenty twenty three, twenty four tariff decision, which was published on the twenty third of February this year. And paragraph one hundred and eighty one. Transnet, sorry, NERSA says in its calculation, Transnet used the rolled-in approach that was adopted for the first time when setting. Transnet's tariffs in the twenty eleven, twenty twelve tariff period. It says a rolled-in volume distance tariff is determined for the Transnet pipeline system by dividing the total. allowable revenue by the total forecast liter per kilometer throughput for the tariff period under review. It then says the calculation is done in accordance with paragraph eleven point five point seven of the tariff methodology and then quotes. Chair, we have not found that in the tariff methodology. The tariff methodology that we have, we see that there was a version eight published in May of this year. But there was a version seven published in 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 twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen. And in that version, it does not set out any detail on how tariffs are to be charged. The the critical aspects of that tariff methodology merely say that the NERSA will do it. Let me just read it to you. I'm sorry, lost my reference. Sorry, I've lost my reference, I'll get it just now. But it does not prescribe the rolled-in method. In the current version of the facility, of the pipeline facilities methodology that we see. Chair, the decision then goes on and we say it departs from the wrong premise. But it goes on to refer to the March twenty eleven decision in paragraph one eighty five. And it says, NERSA took a decision to set maximum tariffs for the Transnet pipeline system using the rolled-in approach. The reasons for adopting this approach as opposed to the incremental approach was due to the following. Chair, I'm going to read these out because. We would submit that NERSA has not reconsidered the appropriateness of these elements, but appears to just repeat. What it said before. And there's a fundamental, there are a number of fundamental problems with that. The first is NERSA investigated Transnet's pipeline system and tariff structure. Findings from the investigations resulted in the view that Transnet petroleum pipelines constitute and should be operated as a system. Because one, interconnections, being physical connections exist between Transnet's petroleum pipelines. Now.
Just a sec, just a sec, I've got, I just want to check. Do you have a presentation? Because I'm not seeing the presentation.
There's no presentation, Chair. Mr. Lipschitz has a presentation. I don't have a presentation.
Okay, now that's fine, then. May proceed then.
I don't have an honour, my presentation is an oral presentation. The first is that interconnections, that's physical connections, exist between Transnet's petroleum pipelines. Now, Chair. There was a debate at the time as to whether or not the D J P and the C O P could be considered connected. But we now have an M P P that goes to Jamison Park. There's no connection between the C O P and the M P P. The fact that there are white product pipelines that leave Natref. Cannot be considered a reason for a physical connection between the crude oil line, which we know cannot be mixed with refined products. And the white product lines. The second point is that, this is the points relied upon, was that centralized planning and scheduling is conducted in the operations of. Transnet's petroleum pipelines. Now, Chair, as the SASSL submission has said and said last year as well. In fact, the crude oil pipeline scheduling is paid for by Natref. And so what we're doing is we are, NERSA is allowing the. Users of the white product pipelines to receive full scheduling services inside their tariff. But at the same time requiring the users of Natref to pay for scheduling outside of their tariff. So in addition to their tariff, they're going to pay the tariff. Plus an amount for scheduling. The next point that NERSA relied on was most of the products in the Transnet petroleum pipelines are interchangeable. Now, we know that crude oil is certainly not interchangeable with diesel and petrol. Then Transnet's petroleum pipelines are functionally interdependent and used to serve a common market. Now, again, the fact that crude oil can be refined into petrol and diesel. Doesn't make it functionally interdependent and serving the common market. It is a supply line and I would recommend to NERSA that they consider the reasons for decision issued in May of this year. When they were looking at version eight of the tariff methodology. And NERSA itself, when referring to the engine pipeline, the sapref pipelines, the other pipelines that exist in South Africa. NERSA points out that the majority of those are pipelines that serve the needs of the particular refinery. And that's what the crude oil pipeline is. It is a dedicated feed line into a refinery. It is not a distribution line out of a refinery and to the market. And that distinction has been lost. The next point that NERSA made at the time was that the rolled-in tariffs would ensure that customers in the same geographic area. Are served by the same pipeline destination and pay the same tariff based on volume. Now, that doesn't turn the crude oil pipeline into an equivalent pipeline service. What we do recognize and SASSL has been at pains to point to recognize is that one of the requirements of the. Pipelines Act is that consumer interest and consumer pricing must be considered. And we recognize that if there was no cross-subsidization, there would be a significant gap and consumer prices would be higher. But what NERSA has done with respect is they have not recognized the nuance. And have just applied a blanket approach and said, well, because we want to protect consumer pricing. We'll just blanket everything and charge the same price to the benefit of consumers. And Mr. Lipschitz will show you quantitatively. How little additional fee would make the difference to protect Natref and Sasselberg. The other thing that Transnet with respect, NERSA has to have regard to. Is something that NERSA itself points out in the in the February decision. From paragraphs one ninety one to one ninety five. NERSA recognizes the significant changes that have occurred in the market since twenty eleven. We know of the refineries having been closed in Durban, Enref is closed permanently, Sapref is closed with no. Indication as to when it's going to reopen. And that leaves Natref as the only crude oil supplier. The crude oil refiner supplying fuel into the South African heartland. Now, the Marani Commission of two thousand and five recognized that the pillars for security of supply. Include and very importantly include the ability to import crude and refine it in South Africa. That's a security of supply issue. There are in addition significant economic factors. That would require, that give jobs to people that support a community and Mr. Lipschitz will identify the significant impacts. On the Free State and Sasselberg area if Natref were to be closed. And that, those are significant factors that we would suggest weren't being considered in twenty eleven because with respect. Everybody took for granted all of the major industrial players that we had in this country. And just recent weeks will show you that Oslo Metal, which was another significant player, Eskom, which is in twenty eleven. Had a very different. The way in which the public dealt with Eskom and Oslo Metal in twenty eleven was significantly different to the way in which. It is dealt with today. And because parties took them for granted in twenty eleven. We cannot continue to take them for granted in twenty twenty three. At the end of that section of the NERSA decision in this year, the paragraph one ninety five. After having recognized certain of the changes, NERSA says, in light of the new information submitted by stakeholders. NERSA has to assess the viability of the rolled-in tariff under current circumstances. This may require the amendment of Transnet's pipeline system operating license. And would therefore necessitate consultation with affected parties and the public at large. The energy regulator will therefore initiate this review immediately after this decision has been finalized. Now, that was written in February of twenty twenty three. In our December submission, we pointed out that we've written, SASSL has written twice to NERSA to ask NERSA. to Nersa to ask Nersa when it is engaging on that review and when these developments can be addressed. And it's had no response. Nersa has not addressed that which itself recognized as a significant element to be addressed in the setting of tariffs. And we'd submit that Nersa cannot pass this on again. It cannot pass over the significant financial impact that these credit, that these tariff arrangements will have if it's just passed on for another year. So we would urge Nersa to to make the necessary adjustments now. Adopt the approach that has been proposed. And we can deal with certain of the details, et cetera, later. But the 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 need for the relief is immediate and urgent. Chair, the the legal basis for the submission is found clearly and in express terms in section twenty eight two of the Act. There, the requirement that there be a methodology is just one of the requirements. And with respect, it seems that Nersa considers or and perhaps Transnet in making its application considers that if there is a methodology, you just follow a methodology without considering the other aspects. That is fundamentally wrong, we would submit. You've got to look at fairness. You've got to look at whether or not the the tariff being charged is non discriminatory. And in that respect, discrimination will have regard to cost. Sassel's not suggesting that it be purely cost based. But Nersa must pass its its give consideration to the fact that when one looks at the costs in these in these calculations and the detail in this application is redacted. So Sassel can't refer you to the actual numbers because we haven't seen them. But we understand that the cost of operating the COP is about one twentieth between five and ten percent of the cost of operating the MPP if one takes capital and operating costs into account. So you're asking Sassel to pay ten to twenty times the cost of the service it's getting in order to cross subsidize the MPP. But you are not giving Sassel any relief for the critical differences between its use of pipelines and the white product pipelines. And that we say is fundamentally unfair, fundamentally discriminatory and 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 must be taken into account. The predictability and stability and the the need to promote access to affordable products, Chair, is both a short term and a long term requirement on Nersa. And with respect, Nersa cannot make its decisions based only on short term benefits of saving a few cents for customers today. Because if the if the idea of nurses to promote access to affordable petroleum products beyond twenty twenty seven or twenty twenty six, Nersa has to consider that the refinery at Sasselberg provides affordable petroleum products to the public. And if Nersa does not take the necessary steps, Nersa may not have Natref. And then the consumers of twenty twenty seven and twenty twenty eight will be subject to higher and unaffordable petroleum products. Because the cross subsidization and benefits that 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 Natref gives now will not be available to them. So we would urge Nersa to think beyond the immediate um, the immediate and to recognize that for Natref to place premium on um, the future, to invest in the clean fuels technology that's required, it must be given the opportunity to do so and to have that benefit in its tariff structuring. Chair, I'm out of time. I haven't made all the points, but the points have been made. Um, perhaps just one more point on the fairness is that I I recognized, I I pointed out that the scheduling costs are not there, but we heard Ms. Naidoo now say that the the SAPREF tanks, the TM one coastal tanks, there are, there is an enormous amount of additional infrastructure which the white product users get for free because it's included in their tariff. But Sassel has to pay in addition because Sassel owns those, Natref owns those additional accumulation tanks, et cetera. So it is fundamentally unfair to charge the same tariff where you're not getting the same service. You're not expending the same costs and you are in fact being detrimentally affected in the outcome. I'm going to hand over to Mr. Lipschitz and apologize for taking, I think he's still got fifteen minutes.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Um, I'm going to share my screen. See if this works. All right. One moment. Okay. All right. Um, I'm assuming everyone can see the screen.
Yes, may proceed.
Okay, so, um.
Put it, put it on presentation mode.
Let's try that. How's that?
Right, may proceed.
Okay. Um, okay, so the fundamental question that we were asked to deal with in the Genesis Report of two thousand and twenty three and which we're going to summarize here is, how do you set uh, tariffs in a in a fair way? And in particular, is there a rationale for a differential between the tariff on the COP versus the tariff on the MPP? Um, our report provides a kind of detailed analysis of this question. And so does this presentation. But what I'm going to do in the next fifteen minutes is I'm going to give you is I'm going to give you a a high level summary. And so we're going to make about six overall points. Um, and the first point that we want to make is that Natref is a key contributor to South Africa. It constitutes two percent of the Free State GDP. It constitutes eighteen percent of the Mitsimaholo municipality's GDP. So the areas around Sasselberg, uh, the communities around Sasselberg fundamentally depend on Natref. And so does, you know, the the Free State economy in general. Um, Natref is currently the only remaining crude oil refinery serving South Africa's economic heartland since the Durban refineries of Enref and SAPREF have closed. And because of that, Natref now plays a crucial role, as Duncan mentioned, in South Africa's security of supply. South Africa can import white fuel, but if our access to white fuel or the cost of white fuel goes up, then we have to rely on alternative mechanisms. We've got two, essentially. We've got, we can, we can refine crude and we can also transform or refine coal into into refined fuel. So those are two remaining legs if something happens to imports of white fuel. And obviously, the the greater the diversity in your ability to access fuel sources, the greater your security of supply. So the crude oil leg is a fundamental pillar in South Africa's security of supply. And if Natref closes, if Natref goes the way of the Durban refineries, then we will lose as South Africa a fundamental pillar, a fundamental leg in our security of supply insofar as serving the inland is concerned. So overall, if Natref closed, South Africa's GDP would decline. Uh, we would lose up to seventeen thousand jobs. A projected thirty billion of an investment would be pulled from the local economy over the next twenty years. And two point eight billion rands per annum that is currently being spent on local suppliers would be withdrawn. And finally, the support that Natref provides to South Africa's balance of payments, that support because we currently doing the margin, we currently doing the refining in South Africa, that support to our balance of payments would fall away. So yes, Natref is a key contributor to South Africa. And as Duncan mentioned, we can't afford simply to ignore this kind of crucial role that this um, this refinery plays in South Africa. The second point we want to make is that just as Natref is is matters to South Africa, the crude white differential plays a key role in sustaining Natref. Um, and in order to understand this, the first major point is the famous transport yield problem. Inland refineries face higher costs in hi- higher transport costs in servicing the inland market relative to coastal refineries. When coastal refineries seek to transport fuel to the inland, they only have to pay for the white fuel that they actually transport. But whereas an inland refinery, it has to pay for what we call extra molecules, which is not just the white fuel that ultimately refines, but also the waste that's included in the crude as well as the black fuels which are included in the crude. And that all has to be transported upline. So they have to transport greater volumes and therefore face greater costs per unit of refined fuel that they end up selling. And because of this, historically, Natref would never have been established inland in the first place. If governments had not given it an explicit guarantee that it would get, that it would receive an effective crude white differential in order to take care of this transport yield problem. So historically, Natref wouldn't be there if it wouldn't have got this crude white differential. And looking forward, as we explained in the Genesis Report, there are many plausible scenarios that unless Natref gets this crude white differential, it will make more sense for the owners of Natref to simply shutter the factory, to shutter the refinery rather than keep on going. So the crude white differential was crucial in the founding of Natref and it's very important going forward as well. The COP, as I think Duncan mentioned, is eighty seven percent times cheaper, at least on a on a on a cost of capital basis relative to the MPP. Since nineteen ninety one, Natref, we haven't, Natref hasn't received an eighty seven percent discount. They've received a twenty one percent discount, a portion of the difference in cost. But this was eliminated retroactively lo- last year in June two thousand and twenty two. But even though that was eliminated because of the Constitutional Court decision that the VA had come to an end, the courts have consistently recognized the appropriateness of that differential and that and they've noted, um, and 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 they've said that the differential is based on sound reasons. And if you don't provide that differential, it may itself be discriminatory. And they've they've noted that just because the VA has come to an end does not mean that Natref cannot press its rights for fair pricing. So what would constitute fair pricing? Well, the differential that would remove the transport yield problem is eleven and a half percent, which we show in our report and we show in this presentation a bit later. Um, and um, so that's eleven and a half percent is what Natref needs to level the playing field inland, and that's relative to eighty seven percent. So it's a small portion of the ultimate cost difference. The fact that Natref currently pays the same rate and doesn't receive any differential now goes to the benefit of importers where the refining activity and all the economic benefits of that refining activity currently takes place overseas. So the summary point that I'd like to make on this slide, as I've gotten green, is that SA refineries are currently being beaten by imports. The security of SA fuel supply is being challenged. And the risk of refinery closure is real. Okay, um. This is so points three, four and five, and then we're going to make a sixth point and then we're going to conclude. So the third point that we want to make is that the required crude white differential, if it was given, if you drove a wedge between the MPP and the COP of eleven and a half percent, we acknowledge that that would lead to an increase in retail prices. But it would be very, very small. Even if you provided this eleven point five percent differential, which would equalize the playing field, the subsidization from the COP to the MPP would still be one point seven billion. And it would still lead to a thirty six cents drop compared to an incremental approach, if you had chosen an incremental approach in which you'd have to have given a, you know, a much bigger price gap. But it still leads to a thirty six cent drop. And that's only three cents different to the different to the drop that Nersa's current approach achieves, which is a thirty nine cent drop. So if you're doing what Nersa currently does, you're able to drop retail prices by thirty nine cents. If you implement Natref's proposal, which would equalize the playing field, instead of dropping retail prices by thirty nine cents, you drop retail prices by thirty six cents, which is a three cent difference. And that three cent difference is dwarfed by other factors in the fuel market. I mean, I'm going to skip it, skip ahead to one slide over here. If you look, this this shows the variation in the retail petrol petrol price from Jan two thousand and twenty two to December. And as you can see, the retail petrol price, this is in the Gauteng area, regularly moves by forty cents, fifty cents. It 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 goes up, if you think about it, it went up from nineteen rand sixty one over here to twenty six rand over here. So, you know, whether over a few months or even just from month to month, the South African consumer is used to dealing with price shifts which dwarf the three cents. The three cents would be a small blip on 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 the variation that 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 the consumer is 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 regularly used to. The the three cents is dwarfed by other factors like, for instance, the the overall price of of pipelines themselves and of um, storage costs, wholesale and retail margins, secondary distribution costs, everything that builds up into the retail price, government levies, like the RAF levy and the fuel levy. So our proposition is that the eleven point five percent differential, which secures this fair uh, a playing field in the inland market, has a very minor impact on retail prices. And crucially, if Natref closes, then Transnet will in any event lose the revenue from these extra molecules. Because no importer is going to transport those extra molecules, those waste molecules and those black fuel molecules via Transnet, Transnet's pipelines into the inland market. So the value of that eleven point five percent differential will in any event be lost if Natref had to close. And more importantly, it's currently only earned because of Natref. Transnet only is able to earn that 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 eleven point five percent, the value of that eleven point five percent because Natref exists within the inland market. But of course, that value is crucial to Natref in order to enable Natref to compete on an equal footing. And finally, the fifth point is, as Duncan mentioned, there are other differences between the COP and the MPP that raise further matters of fairness. So the accumulation infrastructure in Durban on the COP is paid for by Natref. Whereas on the MPP, it's paid for by Transnet. Scheduling management on the COP is primarily handled by Natref. Whereas on the MPP, it's handled by Transnet. And um, and and when it comes to scheduling management on the MPP, it's much more complex because you're having to deal with multiple users of the MPP, multiple different types of petrol, diesel, petrol, multiple different types of fuel, petrol, diesel and multiple different grades of fuel. And you have to worry about intermixture management. And you've got this refractory at Tolton, which 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 handles uh, situations when the intermixture has become too 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 intermixed. Um, and so you've got a situation where there are entire services which are simply not offered on the COP, which are offered on the MPP. And even if you had to say, yes, we want to use a rolled in approach, a rolled in approach doesn't allow you or doesn't justify charging the same price for entirely different services. It might say, we're going to treat the costs of one infrastructure as the same as the other infrastructure. But if you're, you know, getting high speed internet, that doesn't mean you should get the same price as if you're, uh, you know, using a dial in internet connection, so to speak. You you there's no just, you you can't use a rolled in approach to justify charging the same price for, you know, fundamentally or significantly different services where the one service is much richer and more intense than the other. So um, the eleven point five percent differential still allows the COP to provide significant subsidization to the MPP and it yields a a a a very healthy drop in prices with the difference of three cents being very, very minor. More importantly, or not more importantly, but just it's crucial to remind ourselves that the 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 revenue value of this eleven point five percent only exists because Natref is in the inland market. But Natref needs that revenue value in order to compete on an equal basis. Okay, um, this is my second last slide. So, um, wha- what, what we wanna point out here is that we don't say that the rolled-in methodology is the right approach. There's various critiques that you could level against the rolled-in methodology. But even if you use the rolled-in methodology, that is fully in keeping with providing an eleven point five percent differential. Firstly, as we just noted, fundamentally, you still maintain the, the, the large subsidization from the COP to the MPP, and you get the big benefit by dropping retail prices a small, with a small difference. But you fundamentally get the big drop in retail, or, or you get that drop in retail prices. Moreover, as another, uh, reason or another way to see that it's in keeping with, with, with the rolled-in methodology is that NERSA currently uses an approach which divert, which, which, um, moves away from pure per kilometer, per liter pricing. It's not as if NERSA adds up all the volume and then divides it, or adds up all the required revenue and divides it by all the volume. It does do that to a fundamental extent, but then it says, we want to ensure that even if one route is longer than another route, we're going to implement something called route independence. And what route independence does is it says, we're not going to charge per perfect, uniform, per liter, per kilometer pricing. We're going to adjust the per liter, per kilometer pricing when we find that two pipelines serve the same endpoints, even though the one pipeline takes longer to get there than the other pipeline. And the reason you do that, and I think rightly, I, 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 I think that's the right approach, is because that ensures that the users of that, of those pipelines can compete on an equal footing. But if you didn't do that, you would actually be able to lower the prices on the MPP. And that would cause, what we show in our report, a one cent drop in the retail prices. But you're happy to say, no, we're, we're happy with the one cent increase in the retail price because ensuring that the competitors can compete on an equal basis inland is, in this case, more important than that one cent in the retail price, because it, it sustains, you know, investment, uh, uh, competition and all the other objectives of the, of the act. And so just like, uh, NERSA implements, implements route independence for the sake of ensuring fair competition, we suggest it should also implement the crude white differential for the sake of ensuring fair competition. Uh, 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 and, and just to kind of make, this is a slightly technical point, but from an economic point of view, if a regular, if a monopolist or a regulated monopolist seeks to say, you know what, we're gonna look at all of our costs together, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna treat all our costs in, in one big lump, so it's gonna put them all together. Even if it's, that's justified, which it might be for various different reasons, that doesn't mean that that regulated monopolist, if it was trying to price fairly, wouldn't say to itself, okay, but here I need to slightly differentiate. Because here I realize that this is an upstream service, which has got significantly less rich services baked into it, whereas this is a downstream service, and if I truly want everyone to compete on an equal footing, I have to make certain adjustments. So even from an economic point of view, a monopolist, even if he wasn't regulated, if he was acting rationally, he might put all the costs together, but that wouldn't stop him from making slight differentiations where required. Our final point that we wanna make is that when NERSA made the decision to remove the differential in the first place, it did so because it said we're going to change the costing methodology. But the eighty-seven percent difference in cost, there's only one reason that could justify the differential. The major point that we're making here is that there's an additional competitive reason that justifies the differential, and that's removing the transport yield problem. And so I don't think NERSA has, has, I'm not sure, but I don't think NERSA has a- applied its mind to that reason for the differential, which exists even if the MPP and the CPP were the identical cost in actuality. This reason for creating this differential would still exist. So, you know, the point of this slide is, is, is to say that the eleven point five percent differential is in keeping with, uh, NERSA's rolled-in methodology, and its practice of promoting fair competition like it does with route independence. You know, uh, I'm gonna take one more minute and then I'll, I'll stop. The, the recent closure of coastal refineries, it, it increases the stakes significantly for the regulator in breaking with fifty years of policy and practice. And this issue Sorry?
Please, Ripa.
I, 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 I think I can leave it there, I think I'll just, I, I, I think I can leave it there, I, I, I was just gonna, kind of sum up um, that, that, I was on some of the points that I've made already, so I, I, I'm happy to leave it there.
Thank you very much, sir. Please, the whole team, then if you can just take pen and paper and take questions, take questions from, from, from the panel, uh, panel members, uh, by short of hands. If you may, just, uh, raise your hands to ask any questions. Starting off with Madam Masetti, over to you, man.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Chairperson. May I just, um, uh, you know, focus on the last point with regards to, uh, the proposal to implement, uh, uh, what is it, to implement, um, differentials. I just want to start off, uh, by, um, asking, uh, as to uh, the, the proposed differentials. I understand that, you know, we can consider, uh, differentials under section, uh, section twenty-one of the Petroleum Pipelines Act, because it deals with price discrimination. But what it does, then it, it, it confines the, the regulator to specific factors, or what it calls, um, the objective differences. So you need to look at the differences, and, and, and I would like to find out then, how do we fit in the way in which you are proposing that NERSA implements the differentials? If you can, um, perhaps clarify that, so that we can see, um, whether that will fit in well in terms of the mandate that we have in section twenty-one. Uh, I think it's section twenty-one, if I'm not mistaken, of the Petroleum, um, uh, Pipelines Act. Can you clarify that for me, because I'm, I'm very much interested? And the, and the eleven point five, uh, why eleven point five? Because differentials is differentials. And what is key, and this is an issue, um, uh, that, uh, people would want to look into, um, what are, what are the specific differences? So if you've got the cost, should the price differ, because there's a difference between the cost and the price? Should then, the price, should the differences in price or in tariffs be exactly the same as the differences in the cost of supply or the cost that are, um, caused by the people that are utilizing the service? How, how are we going to determine that, uh, differential? And the eleven percent, how does it come about? Thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much, Madam Masetti, uh, Mr. Komet, over to you, sir.
Thank you, Chairperson, um, I've got a couple of questions that are interrelated. The, 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 the first question, Chair, is, is for me, just maybe to get an understanding, I mean, when this pipeline, um, okay, maybe we'll put it this way. The principle that is embodied in section twenty-one F of the Petroleum Pipelines Act, that the, the COP could be, actually be licensed to transport both diesel and crude. Has that concept, um, been proven to be incorrect? And therefore, um, the, the, the whole notion that, um, what, which, which was covered in that, in, in that part of the act, that perhaps has, has, ha, 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 has that, has, has, has that principle been discounted fully? Because for me, the question, the reason why I'm asking this question is that if the, if the COP couldn't it potentially be, or isn't it potentially licensed to, to, to transport both diesel or transport, um, specifically diesel and, and, and crude, as was originally thought of, I think, in terms of the section twenty-one F? Um, if that principle still holds, then perhaps the whole concept of just looking at the COP as a single pipeline, which is a dedicated pipeline, just transporting diesel to Natref, might not be appropriate. I'm just asking a question there, whether has that principle been discounted now? Number two, the, 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 the question that I, that puzzles me a bit, and maybe before I ask that particular question, is that in terms of the eighty-seven percent that is indicated as, as, as a slide, I think, can't remember the slide number, the comparison um, between the, the COP line and the, and the, and the, and the, and the refined product lines. Is that, is that number correct if it's taken back to nineteen ninety-one, as was indicated, I think, in the presentation? Um, because I'm, I'm just trying to understand whether it was, when, when, when compared with the DJP, the then DJP, what was the differential between, um, was, was, was that figure of eighty-seven percent? Um, i- i- okay, is, is that figure of eighty-seven percent differential correct? But I think, linked to that, I think for me, the question that, that then arises, that, that arises, is that the, the concept of a rolled-in tariff, or rather of, of looking at the Transnet pipeline, uh, pipeline as a system, when it was first introduced, prior to the, um, the emergence, or prior to the uh, the coming into, um, and into operation of the, uh, of the MN, the, the, uh, the, the NMPP. The question is, if that concept at that time made sense in terms of looking at the pipelines, the pipeline, Transnet pipelines as a system, when the DJP was virtually, um, um, written off at that time, I guess, compared with the new assets, uh, that come with the NMPP, if SASSOL supported that concept at the time, why would they not support the concept now? Or was that concept not supported even at that point, at, at that point, when it was just DJP versus COP? So that is a, 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 a fundamental question in my head. But I think lastly, you know, I'm not sure I'm gonna frame it correctly here, but the, the, the issue of, i- is, is there, it, how appropriate is it? That if we were to look at this Natref neutrality, I, we may not, we may have called it something different, but in essence, the, the concept of Natref neutrality. How appropriate is that with the demand of the Act for cost reflectivity in terms of tariffs? Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Komet. I don't see any other hands, but let me just, uh, come in with two or so questions. First of all, I would like to say that there is a, a methodology in place, and there are, there's a certain stance that has been taken thus far, and we've been going on with it for, for quite some time. And the application is based on that, uh, coming from twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve. And, um, actually, there hasn't been a, 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 a prob- a problem raised per se by SASSOL in my recollection since joining. So I would just like to know i- whether this whole relooking and, and, and dissatisfaction, is it prompted by the court judgment? Or not, if I can just get clarity on that? And then I would also like to state that, um, they, they, we, from time to time, the regulator does review its, uh, stances, uh, methodologies, various positions, and even the, 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 the regulatory framework from time to time. And, and, and it should be clear that the issue of rolled-in disaggregated is part of uh, what we, we, we have in our radar to, to, to embark upon. And it shouldn't be seen as if we are, we've been, we are being pushed by this um, submission of, of fuels, because it deals with the structural element when we are of the view that the structure is already in place and of importance is for us to work based on that particular structure. I would, um, like to, to, to also highlight on the issue that was raised in terms of the crude oil pip- pipeline, that there, there has, there have been instances in the past where diesel was transported to crude oil. With regard to, uh, Natref, I would just like to, 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 to understand as whether I was still looking at, at Natref in isolation of, um, uh, uh, Secunda. Because my understanding is that through various mechanisms like the SNI, one would, uh, still look at, um, uh, this as somehow integrated. As I said, I don't want to, to go into, into much details uh, in terms of questions around what you, 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 you talking of, uh, or for lack of a better term, I'll call it maybe, team. Because it then depends on how far you, one goes in terms of disaggregating. Uh, there are molecules coming from Secunda that are dealt with as if they're coming from the coast. Uh, should there be, uh, something that is done with regard to, uh, cost reflectivity in that regard, in the bigger scheme of things? So you, you, you'd appreciate also that there is a deemed a pricing mechanism when it comes to fuels, which, which got a lot of things in them. So, but, but, but I think that when one is, uh, fully embarking on the, on the, the, the review, one will then be able to, to engage on the, on this matter differently. As I said, I don't want to, to cloud the issue, start engaging on, on something that is structural and therefore having to be dealt with elsewhere, um, versus what we have on, uh, on at hand with the application, uh, post in the ES, I mean, uh, lodged in that particular man. But, but I just want to, more, it's more like, uh, to summarize from your side at a high level, so you can give context as to the prompting for this, because I think we've been going for some time uh, with this application and this kind of, 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 uh, public hearings, uh, and, and not necessarily having this as a, a major concern, particularly coming from, from, from uh, SASSOL. I'll leave it at that, and may please then respond, seeing that there are no other hands, uh, from the panel members. Over to you, uh, Sirs.
Thank you, um, thank you, Chair. I think what we will, uh, probably do, um, Duncan, would you want to take the question on, um, on the section twenty-one? Can, can, can you deal with that? Uh, I, I can, uh, and then Robert, can you just deal with how we came up with the eleven and a half percent? I think if we can put those to bed, we can then move on to the others.
Yes, first, in, in relation to, um, Ms. Masetti's, um, question, section twenty-one deals with price discrimination, but you find your answer both in twenty-one, but more particularly in section, um, twenty-eight, which is the, um, setting an approval of tariffs, um, provision. And, and here is, and it's something we've addressed in our written submission, is that the concept of a system has been introduced, and this may answer one of the later questions as well. The concept of a system has been introduced because of the wording of section twenty-eight-three. And what twenty-eight-three says, the tariffs set or approved by the authority must enable the licensee to recover the investment, operate and maintain the system, make a profit commensurate with the risk. Now, what we, we've said, and just to answer one of the questions, SASSOL has always said, and SASSOL objected in twenty-eleven to answer, uh, Mr. Gomedy's question. SASSOL has always opposed the idea that the COP can be treated the same way as the white products. There's that, and I'm sure that the records will reflect that. But having the, what twenty-eight-three does is it says you operate and maintain the system. So it's, it's saying to NERSA, you've got to allow Transnet overall to, to recover its costs. But that is a very different proposition to what section twenty-eight-one and section twenty-eight-two say. Twenty-eight-one says the authority must set as a condition of a license, the tariffs to be charged by a licensee in the operation of a petroleum pipeline, and approve the tariffs for storage, et cetera. And then two says, a tariff charged in terms of subsection one must be, and then it has the various criteria that we've been through. Now, Ms. Masetti, to answer your question, the, the fact that there is an allowable revenue calculation that, that considers the overall the the fact that there is an allowable revenue calculation that that considers the overall transnet costs doesn't detract from NERSA's obligation to set an independent pipeline tariff for each pipeline. You don't set a tariff for the system, and when you publish your tariffs, you don't publish a tariff for the system. You publish pipeline tariffs per pipeline, and the COP is an independent pipeline. And when you set that pipeline tariff in terms of section twenty eight two, you will consider all of these factors. And so each of those factors that we have addressed in this are the factors that you will say, do I charge the same base, do I use the same basis to 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 set the price for the COP? Or do I need to adjust the COP tariff using section twenty eight two? I hope that that answers the question. And Mr. Lipschitz can can deal with the, how you calculate that differential. And you will recognize each of the fairness, appropriateness, and the cost elements. But if it was purely cost, the the COP would be eighty seven percent cheaper or eighty odd percent cheaper than the than the MPP. And we're not suggesting that, but we're suggesting that if you apply the factors in twenty eight two, you will achieve a fair outcome. Robert, do you want to deal with the eleven and a half percent? You're on mute.
I think it's best for me to show you the graph. So let me do that. So where the eleven and a half percent comes from, and I think I'll address one or two other questions. It 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 comes from Sasol's yield, I mean Natref's yield from its factory. So the percent, so of every liter of crude that is pushed into Natref's factory, what percentage of that liter can be made into white fuel? So what this graph shows is, well, it varies slightly per year. But on average, eighty eight over the last five years, eighty eight point five percent of every liter of crude can be transformed into 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 refined fuel. And eleven and a half percent of that liter is transformed either into waste or to black fuel. So as you can see in this graph, it's about three percent that's transformed into waste and about eight percent that's transformed into black fuel. And so the eleven and a half percent where that comes from is it takes the average of the last five years and says that on average, the the white fuel yield is eleven and a half percent. I don't know if you want me to deal with what it was in nineteen ninety one. But insofar as that specific question is concerned, that's how we get to eleven and a half percent.
Robert, there was a quest- Yeah, sorry, there was a quest- question in terms of, you know, the the eighty seven percent versus, you know, what was the differential in the tariff in ninety one? So if you can, if you can just deal with that, so you know, what was the the historical tariff differential? And what and we are now proposing eleven and a half?
So, well, in nineteen ninety one, the difference that was agreed to commercially in the variation agreement was you could roughly twenty one percent, so it's about double what we're asking for here. The relevant question is, well, what would the white fuel yield have been in nineteen ninety one? I don't know the answer to that question. I think Natref or Sasol could get back to you on that. I understand that it would have been a lot higher because Natref have 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 invested significantly on increasing its yield. So as you go back in time, the yield would get worse and worse. And that probably speaks to some of the reasons why there was a twenty percent differential in the VA. I also just want to take an opportunity to say the following, that insofar as the methodology is concerned, you could keep your existing methodology exactly like you currently implemented. And at the end, you create a wedge between the an eleven and a half percent wedge between the COP and the MPP tariff. And you do that in a way that depending on how much volume is flowing on the MPP versus COP, you keep the overall revenue that transnet earns unchanged. We could help, you know, further elucidate that, but it's quite a simple additional calc, which you do at the end of your rolled in methodology.
Thanks, Robert. I think I'll deal with Mr. Gomedy's question in terms of diesel, diesel in the COP. It's correct, there have been times where there was diesel in the COP. Generally, in in situations where there is a major where there is a major security of supply interruption. The longest period was after a significant fire at Natref way back in, I think, two thousand, two thousand and one. So it can happen. However, it's a complex operation. What one needs to do is one needs to put in what we call header materials, which are generally solvents, probably petrol-like components in front of the diesel to try and clean and clean the pipe. Those, that diesel is then taken into Natref, it has to go into separate tanks. The one needs to separate out the intermixes that one has there, and very often it had to be reprocessed completely, so it is not. It is not an economically rational thing to do. The COP is designed as a as a crude oil pipeline, and that is its best use. It doesn't take away the opportunity, though, that in an emergency, you know, with significant additional cost and operational sort of interference, one can then, you know, as a temporary measure, bring bring other products up if crude is not flowing. Robert, will you just respond to the the question in the in the in the in the chat?
Sure. The eighty seven percent, so that it's it's in our report, it's I think it's the annexure in our report in which we set out the detail of the calculation. But essentially, when you look at the costs of capital, the capital costs of building the COP versus the capital costs of building the MPP, and you, you know, do the economic cost of accounting analysis, you come up with an eighty seven percent difference. Now, we've shared those calculations with you, so they can be, you know, interrogated by by yourselves. But that's where where it comes from, it's done by our cost of accountant, Anthony Fellet at Genesis. And, you know, we've provided those calculations to you.
Really, can I just deal with Mr. Gomedy's question around section twenty? Just
Yes, please.
Just to note that section twenty doesn't refer to diesel. Section twenty refers, it's section, it's twenty, I think Mr. Gomedy referred to section twenty one F. It's it's section twenty one, twenty F. And it it says a petroleum pipeline may be licensed for either crude or petroleum products or both. As long as sufficient pipeline capacity is available for crude to enable the uninterrupted operation of a crude oil refinery located at Sasselberg to operate at its normal operating capacity at the commencement of this act. What I want to just highlight to Mr. Gomedy is that the focus of that clause is to make sure that Natref continues to operate. And and that is the focus of the legislation. The the question is premised on the idea that the COP could be used for diesel. That presupposes that it would be imported diesel being used in the COP. And that's the very purpose that the COP is not intended for. The COP is there to make sure that Natref survives, sorry, the the act and section twenty point five, and the the COP is there to make sure Natref survives. So we'd suggest that even though physically one could use it for diesel, but you'd have to clean it and spend lots of money doing so, which you wouldn't do if Natref wasn't there, that the whole purpose of section twenty is to make sure that Natref is sustainable.
Thanks, thanks Duncan. I think the last question was Mr. Kisa's question regarding Natref and Secunda. Mr. Kisa, are we looking at this as Natref on a standalone basis here? You are correct, there is a pipeline between Natref, Secunda and Natref, and that pipeline can and and does move move products between Secunda and Natref. And when I say products, largely components that can be blended to to achieve products that cannot be made at at Natref, so that certainly does happen. However, what we're talking about here is the disadvantage Natref has against imported product from the coast. So we 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 certainly look at it from a Natref standalone basis when when we make these arguments and and we speak about the requirement for a tariff that recognizes that the one one pipeline is an upstream, it's a supply pipeline, and the balance of the pipelines are delivery pipelines where all the product in those pipelines can be delivered, you know, the same is not true for the crude oil tariff. Mr. Kisa, I hope we've answered all the questions. I'll just check with Robert and Duncan to see if there's anything else they want to add, and then we can take some more if if something is required.
And just perhaps from my side, I think the chair asked whether, and it was also the premise for one of Mr. Gomedy's questions was whether this is this approach from Sasol has been prompted by the court judgment. This is a, this is prompted economically by the economic reality. The court judgment meant that the variation agreement didn't give Sasol and Total the the contractual benefit that they are looking to enforce against transnet. But even that is something that is is not the fundamental reason. The fundamental reason is that there is an economic requirement that this differential be put in place, and it's in the interests of both Natref. But because because it's in the interest of Natref, it is in the interest of the South African consumer and the South African public. And just, I mean, NERSA will be well aware of its obligations under the NERSA Act, that it's it is required to act in the public interest. And those factors that Mr. Lipschitz introduced his speech with with in relation to Sasselberg and the Free State, et cetera, those are critical elements in the in the public interest that NERSA will take into account in making this decision.
Thank you, Mr. uh sorry, Mr. Kisa, we we hand back over to you.
Okay, thank you very much on with your responses. And if you've still got to want to augment your your responses, you are you are at liberty to do so by the fifth of January twenty twenty four. I would like to to state that with regard to the to the latter question, if you may, in in that part, in that kind of argumentation, I would appreciate that you also talk to to, you know, looking at this in a broad sense, because remember, when we take a particular position, it will not just be targeted necessarily on Natref. One would be also looking at the overall system. As I said, that please look at the issue of the integration of Natref to 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 Secunda and what the implications therefore could be in in when one look at the disaggregated system. I'm not expecting an answer now, but I'm saying look into that in in its entirety. And then I see that Mr. Komete has got his hand up. Mr. Komete, you may chip in, please.
Thank you, Chair. Apologies for coming in again. I I I was just also, I was hoping that perhaps you may ask this question, but maybe can I phrase it this way for me? That is it possible for for Sasol to also in providing supplementary information that they could also maybe indicate? Although that might be confidential, but to be treated as such, but indicate to the regulator the the competitiveness. So for instance, reference is made to the closure of South African refineries, clearly in terms of competing with the global refineries. Perhaps it is a challenge. But the question for me is, would 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 three cents, for instance, per liter make make any any significant impact on the sustainability of Natref? So the question might from that I'm trying to find out if it's possible that if Sasol could supplement his input by just indicating, you know, the 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 kind of levels that could be could ensure sustainability at of 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 Natref. Such that in the overall system of discussions, we may be able to then, you know, put this in that context. Because it's not just, because here what we are looking at is it's the sustainability of the pipeline system, but Natref is also bringing the issue around the sustainability of Natref. But the question is, you know, whatever that is done for the system and, you know, the impact that it has on Natref, what big an impact would that be? Is it something that is worthwhile even looking at? I'm I'm hoping my question is has been formulated properly, Chair. Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Gomedy. That's certainly clear. We 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 shall certainly do that.
Okay, thanks then. If you may just please provide that that response, looking at the issue of sustainability. I think also from the point of view of where we're going with regard to thinner fuels competing versus the international supply. With that, the part of your presentation is concluded with the yesterday, man, Arvind Tena and Mr. Lipschitz. We appreciate your presence here and your presentation, as well as the responses provided. I would like then to give an opportunity to Madam Naidoo to just provide overall response, just five to ten minutes from your side from transnet's side.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think as your way matters discussed today is under litigation, so it's subject and I will not be responding to anything that was just presented by the Sasol team. However, just from transnet pipeline's perspective, we just want to thank the Petroleum Pipelines Regulator for giving us this opportunity to present today. And we will certainly get back to you in writing, as promised, by the fifth of January, for all the matters that we have to provide feedback on, Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam Naidoo. And from our side, we are looking forward to your submissions to augment your responses as well as touch on on other issues that you could not respond to right away. Thanks also to Sasol, and looking forward to receiving both your inputs by way of written submissions by the fifth of January twenty twenty four. This then brings us to the end of our public hearing. I'd like to thank everyone that has taken time to be part of these proceedings, as well as those that have followed us through various live streaming channels. And thanks to the panel members for your presence questioning, which helps us in terms of coming to a more and better informed decision. So we we again submit humbly so that we do not have the monopol of wisdom. And therefore, when whatever we do, we need inputs from various stakeholders for us to to be able to regulate in the best interest of South African corporation, as well as the 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 players and 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 the public that is engaged in this sector. From my side, thank you very much. The public hearing stands adjourned. Thank you.